Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Fivable livestream Q and A on AP Europe. Can everyone hear me loud and clear? Thumbs up in the chat room if you can hear me. Great, awesome. So, hi, everyone. So, we have a lot of people coming in right now. We have a lot of questions. So again, exam coming up very, very quickly. Yep. So my name is Liam Macklin. I'm a teacher in New York quarantined like a lot of people right now. So staying home with the kids and teaching AP online in my high school, but also taking questions around here. Anybody want to tell us where they're from, where they're coming in tonight from? What states? Anybody still taking regular school these days? California, Florida, Carolina, California, okay. Louisiana, very, very cool. Okay, so all across, different times, different hours. So again, so welcome to tonight's streams. So today's just a general Q and A, any questions, whatever you guys are studying right now in school. I'm assuming you guys, most of you by now finished period seven, one to seven. That's what's going to be covered this year in this exam. So I'm assuming most people are reviewing. Did anyone not finish period seven yet? Everyone finished it by now? So again, the exam will now finish in 1914. So it's basically, yeah, so the exam is basically going to be from 1450 to 1914. Like basically not including World War One. So basically from the Renaissance, Renaissance. Yeah, unit seven. So it's unit one to unit seven. They changed the period of times. Well, we used to have four periods. It was period one to four. So period three was the end. And now they changed it to it's unit seven. So basically 1914. Okay, so let's get into some questions and maybe we'll talk in the second part, we'll give some tips on DBQ, see what will work for the DBQ. So yeah, I mean, it's basically a chapter, units is basically just before World War One. That's the end of the units. In the book, depends which textbook you guys are using. If you're using the McKay book, I think it's chapter 27, I think it's the last one. Alright, so let's get into question. Question number one, for complexity point, if we can choose to write about alternative view prompts other than using the documents, support alternative argument, do we have to do anything else to do complexity? Thank you. Alright, so my advice personally, complexity point, I would say stay away from it completely. It's not even worth your time. The big change this year, the DBQ is only 45 minutes. That's very, very hard to read five documents like in 10, 15 minutes. You only have like 30 minutes to write. So I'm going to talk about some strategies tonight, how to tackle. We're going to talk about the rubric. There are 10 points on the table. Complexity is probably the hardest one. So I wouldn't even start thinking about how trying to get that point. There's a lot of easier point to get. And remember, you might still get a five, even if you don't get those 10 points. So my advice personally, don't even think about complexity point. Start from picking up your points from the basic stuff such as thesis, context, getting into the documents. I would not try to get to complexity. If you have complexity, it's in there. They will probably see it with the whole essay together. So I would not even think about strategy, how to grab complexity point. That's my personal advice. Alright, so Rowan already touched on this, but in the College Board videos, they mentioned something about third paragraph for the complexity point. Could you elaborate more? Should we include in that paragraph and things? Okay, so I don't know why you guys are really getting into this complexity point. It's, it's not worth it. Again, my strategy, I'm going to give you later my DBQ tips, is my first paragraph is probably going to be my thesis and my context kind of to set up my whole essay. Then I would probably divide my five documents in two separate groups, trying to have counter arguments. Maybe doing counter arguments will get to the complexity point if you kind of like are going to have multiple viewpoints interacting with one another. By the time you're going to get to the end, I don't know if you're going to have time for like a third or fourth paragraph to get to that complexity point. Alright, do you know the greatest system? How are they going to point to convert to the five-point grading system? Okay, so that's a question a lot of students are asking about the grading system or what's a passing grade? So we don't know exactly now how they're going to grade it. They're probably going to grade it based upon a scale. I mean, I'm assuming from now it makes sense. So let's say a 10 or nine, if you get in this essay, might give you five points, I'm assuming. And a four will probably, if you get an eight, seven, or six. I'm assuming that a five will let you pass this exam. So how they're going to grade it, the scale is probably going to depend what grades people are going to bring in. If the highest grade is going to be a seven, you know, then they're going to have to start scaling it based upon that. If the high, if a lot of people are going to get nine, then they're going to have to think about it. Remember, there's also a lot of notes open in this exam. So this is the first time they're kind of doing this format. So we don't know how they're going to tackle this thing. But I'm already thinking of the big challenges. You only have 30 minutes to write. And I'm afraid that a lot of students are going to start searching online for answers or looking at their book and going to waste a lot of time. So one of my biggest tips is just don't try to search online and start getting notes from your book. If you want to, I recommend in advance having your notes. Alright, next question. Is it good to spend five to seven minutes to plan ahead to create a line of reasoning before writing? A good question. I would say first of all, what you want to do instead of the five, seven minutes spending is before the exam, because this exam allows you an open book or an open notes. I would stay away from a book, but that's going to take you a long time to search things. I would say in advance, maybe have a pile of key points listed for you in advance, because you're allowed to use notes. Okay? So once you see what the question will be, so we have like nine periods in AP Europe or nine units now. So unit one, unit two, unit three. So let's say unit one is Renaissance and the Age of Exploration. So let's say I see the question is going to be, I would recommend maybe pile up seven units of documents on your table, one to seven. And let's see, when we see the question is the Renaissance, I have my pile of unit one and I have my major points listed over here. So maybe with that, I can start thinking automatically looking at that. And maybe from that, I'm going to start thinking about my line of reasoning. I don't know if it's five, seven minutes. That's a long time to think about something like that. But again, depends on the question. So that's a very general thing to think, what is my line of reasoning? How many points do you need at least to pass? Again, it all depends what other students will get. I'm assuming at least a five. I'm assuming a five will let you pass the exam. If there's 10 points on the table, I'm assuming five will let you pass the exam unless everyone is scoring like nine and 10, and I don't really see it. By the way, on an average, most students historically on DBQs, if you read the year reports, you guys probably don't read them. On an average from seven points, it used to be a seven-point DBQ, most students scored like a two. So most students are scoring, don't score that high in a DBQ. Because it's also the end of the exam, it's a three-hour exam. But now there's 45 minutes. So who knows how much people will score. But I'm assuming a five, the highest, probably a six. I'm assuming that you will pass this exam. Okay, should I put the first paragraph for our argument and another one for a counter argument? Or should I just have two paragraphs for our argument? Again, if basically you're going to have a thesis in the beginning. And you're, based upon your thesis, your argument supports the thesis. So let's say whatever, you wrote an essay about the Renaissance and you claimed that the Renaissance was influenced by Christianity. So then you will write a paragraph supporting that the Renaissance was based upon Christianity. Let's say you made a counter argument in the other paragraph. So you kind of contradict that argument. So again, the argument is just to prove that your thesis is correct. So you can have counter arguments in different paragraphs. That's one way to approach it, but it depends on the situation. That's a good strategy, but it depends on the question in my work. Alright, you know what? Let me stop for a second with the question and let me show you a little bit what I was thinking about. If everyone is so focused on the DBQ now, let me show you a few things, what I'm thinking about the DBQ to do. And then we'll see if that helps answering the question and some of these questions that you guys are popping in. And then we'll take probably more questions. Alright, so let me just share my screen here. Can I see my slides right now? Let me close this thing. Alright, okay, so remember to think Fivable, check Fivable in Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. Alright, so let me just also give you a few basic details about the DBQ, because there's a little bit confusion in case you guys are not completely sure about the dates and events. So the AP Europe, last time I checked with all the new updates, just so you know, it's going to be on 4:00 PM Eastern Time, and it's May 13. Now, before the exam starts, hopefully your teacher told you about this, you're going to log into the computer. They're going to send you an email with login information. You need your school code also. I'm sure your coordinator talked about that. So you're going to log 30 minutes before the exam. Kind of get yourself first tips for DBQ. Get a closed room for yourself, that there won't be too much noise. Lock it to all your siblings and family members to stay out for the next hour or so. So 30 minutes before the exam, you're going to log into the computer system. And they might, they might give you like some typing test to make sure that the computer is working or connected or whatever's going on with that. You also have the option of writing the essay on a piece of paper. So it's up to you if you guys want to, if you're a great typewriter, type on the computer. If you think you're better in writing quickly on a piece of document, so you can write on a piece of document and at the end of it, just take a picture and submit that. So if you're logging online, test begins at 4:00 PM, and it's 45 minutes. Around 4:45, you're going to see the total, some sort of a red flash signaling that your time is up. And then you got five minutes to upload the document. So that five minutes are very, very crucial, because you don't want to miss that deadline and, and like basically lose your exam. So I would probably recommend maybe even send it in 4:47, sorry, alright, 2:47. Basically, two, three minutes before the deadline. Does that make sense? So that's pretty much what you need to know about, a little bit about technicality, dates, and so forth. And again, it depends on each of your Western time, mountain time, and so forth. This is Eastern time. So just double check to make sure you got the correct time and log 30 minutes earlier on. Okay, other advice I recommend for this exam is maybe you want to write your own notes in advance. So, and again, a lot of people I think are going to get, make the mistake thinking, well, I can Google everything, let me search everything. But that's going to take time. You have to put a strategy in. Your biggest obstacle in this exam, the way I see it, it's time. How can I manage my time? It's only 45 minutes. It's very, very short for a DBQ. So if I have notes in advance, maybe I don't have to search as much. And when I say notes, I'm not talking about you guys writing a whole summary of 15 pages about Martin Luther. I'm talking about like major bullet points. So you kind of get the main people, the main events, so just to set yourself up for this exam. You probably, when we're going to get to getting to the documents, to get the basic points from the document, at least you have to describe two documents to get one major, the first point of using the documents. If you want to, if you want to make, make sure that you got it correctly, even use three documents. You can also divide it, as I said, in packs of periods and write notes for each specific period. I would also recommend maybe doing the context at the end. Usually teacher recommend doing the context in the beginning. That's a whole paragraph or three or four sentences. So that might take some time. So that's something, but again, it depends. Every teacher is going to give you a different advice based upon that situation. Alright, so let's look at this year rubric. So most year, throughout the year, most teachers have been teaching their students to do, to do like a seven-point rubric. But now with the new exam, it's a 10-point rubric. So they kind of changed things. They added more points on the table. So whatever strategies your teacher taught you up till now, or same way I was teaching my, my students, we're going to have to rethink the strategy, how to tackle this exam. So you might want to have also a rubric, something like this printed in front of you. I know the College Board released a new DBQ online, so you can check that out. It specifies all the details. I just took from them all the major listing of how you get each point. So let's go over the rubric and just explain what are the points on the table. And I would again, stay away from complexity, because it's only one point. There are 10 points on the table. I would not waste too much energy on that, on that point, especially when outside evidence is so easy to get on this exam. Alright, so let's go over it. So thesis that you learned throughout the year, very, very important, gives you one point. So once you read your five documents, my first advice is you get your exam, you have 45 minutes, you're going to start reading your documents and start making notes. For each document, kind of summarize what are the main points of this document. You've got five documents, one of them probably you won't understand and you probably won't, not be sure exactly what, what is it stating. So summarize your main points on the side. And once you read your five documents, this is where your thesis should start to gel in. What is my thesis? What was the cause of this event? What was the, if it's a comparison essay, so what's my group number one? What's my group number two? That's where you should start building your thesis. Okay, so first point is thesis. I think there's a whole stream coming up just on thesis. I think Chris is supposed to do that. So maybe just check that. Context is also worth one point. Context is the historical background to whatever the event is. So let's say it's the Renaissance, your context is going to be the Middle Ages. Let's say it's the English Reformation is your essay topic. So Martin Luther is your context. Something that just came a little bit before the main event that starts the situation. That's your second point, context. Getting into the documents, there's going to be five documents. This is the breakdown of the documents. Five documents. If you describe what's inside two documents, just summarize the documents, they will give you one point. Okay? And the trick over here, this is where my students, some students make mistake about this point is they just copy what's in the document. You are not supposed to copy what's in the documents. You're supposed to summarize it. Just kind of try to rephrase it. Instead of just saying Thomas More says and then just quote Thomas More, trying to rephrase it a little bit instead of using direct terms. Next up is supports the argument. This is where somebody was asking question about how you support an argument. You made a claim in the thesis with support the argument you're trying to prove with the document's help, of course, that your thesis was correct. Okay? If you're going to support your argument with two documents, you get another extra point. If you're going to support your argument with four documents, and this one is going to be hard, you're going to get an extra point. Okay? So up till now, we're talking about three potential points that you're going to get from using the documents. Either describing the document or supporting the argument. Two correct support gives you one point. Two more gives you, gives you already three points. Next points on the table is what is called HIP or hippo. We're going to talk about that separately. That's historical context, intended audience, purpose, or point of view. If you give one of those, if you explain a historical context, a point of view in one of the documents, a POV of a person, you get one point. If you explain two POVs, you get two points. So this is, I would think, I think hippo is a lot easier than support the argument. And there's a lot more points to gain here. Okay? Finally, for the good news for this exam, it's definitely the good news. And where I'm thinking the easiest point to pick up in this version of this exam is going to be outside evidence. Outside evidence, for one piece of outside evidence, you're going to get one point. For two pieces of outside evidence, you're going to get two points. Okay? Why is this so easy? Everyone can tell us why is this one going to be easy? That one is going to be super easy, because you can just get the outside evidence by taking notes in advance. So all you got to do for outside evidence, you can list them in advance and write them down. Now, the mistake that people lose sometimes in outside evidence is they just drop a general name, but they don't really go through and explain what the outside evidence is. So you can't just drop a name of someone. You have to say who the person was and what he actually wrote. If you're saying, let's say the essay is about social Darwinism or something like that, you want to use a source, a real person that is not listed. Let's say the essay is about the new imperialism. They listed five documents of five different people that did something during the age of the new imperialism. And you have to look at the five documents and saying, who is not listed here? Who do I know that operated in the new imperialism? And let's say my argument was social Darwinism. So I have to find a piece of evidence, outside evidence, to support my thesis. So I have to think about, hmm, who do I know? Anyone knows any person that supported social Darwinism in his writing? Cecil Rhodes? Yeah, that could be it. That could be it for an example. Anybody else knows any other person supporting social Darwinism? Kipling, White Man's Burden, perfect example. Let's say I'm using Kipling, White Man's Burden, and I'm using him. And again, I don't have to write a whole paragraph about it. I write two, three sentences. I say, Ronald Kipling, in his poem White Man's Burden, talked about how the white man needs to take the burden and help, you know, people in the Philippines or people who are less successful than white people, and that's the burden of the white man. Okay? I just do it in two, three sentences. I explain that and then I prove my evidence. Now again, if I have it in advance, if I take notes for every period and list a few group of people, then if the exam happens, I can go into my notes quickly. I'm not going to grab whatever like, like a McKay book and start opening it and start looking for the thing. That's going to take me a long, long time. So I'm thinking outside evidence usually is, and most of previous DBQ questions was one of those points that student usually missed. Now I'm thinking, because you have the option of the notes, outside evidence, I'm thinking is going to be an easy point to get maybe one or even two, if you have them in advance, you just need to know your topic and other people. Finally, complexity point, my advice, stay away from it. I think it's a really, really amazing essay. You're going to get the complexity point anyhow. It's not necessarily that you have to work on it. If you don't, I don't think you have time to develop this strategy of back and forth like creating nuance and all these sort of things when you have like only 30 minutes to write. I think that's a challenging even for like professionals. Okay, so that's pretty much about the rubric. So a couple of more tips before I'm going to go get back to the Q and A. So whatever you were taught throughout the year, so context and thesis is exactly the same. Hopefully your teacher taught you about that before. Every teacher's got different strategy, how to approach documents. Everyone has got a different way to. Some people teach that each paragraph you have to do HIP analysis. Some people tell their students to divide it into three separate group, political, social, economical. The way I usually teach my students to approach five documents, and I think because we have five documents, I think your strategy should be, look at the five documents and try to divide them in two groups. Okay? This is where somebody else was asking about counter arguments. Look at the five documents and see, can I divide them into two separate groups? What are my, what is my grouping? Let's say it's an essay about the Industrial Revolution, like was it a success or what is, was it a failure or something like that? Maybe I would say one counter argument saying the Industrial Revolution had a great benefits. And then I'll try to find all the documents that support that argument. Let's say another group saying that Industrial Revolution was a failure. Try to group them at that situation. Let's say my DBQ is about Bismarck. Was Bismarck a conservative or was he whatever? Or was he a realpolitik? Was he more Machiavellian? So I would start looking at my documents and see which one fits each argument. So start up with two groups. Once I divided my documents into two groups, one group is going to be paragraph number one. Second group is going to be paragraph number two. So altogether, I'm thinking something like three paragraphs. First paragraph is your thesis and context. Second paragraphs, two or three groups. Third paragraph, the other groups. And again, it might be your group will just be one document or one outside evidence. That's the way I would approach it. Complex understanding, my recommendation is to skip it. Outside evidence, you have to mention the name of the person if you're mentioning or what he actually wrote. So if you say Kipling, you have to mention the white man's burden. If you're going to say Thomas More, you have to mention utopia. So if you just say he wrote a book, that might not be enough. You have to know the name of the person or what he actually did or actually what he stood for. You need, you need some meat. So same thing in the context. If you write a general context, that's fine. But just try to see if you can give something like a real example, a real event or a real person. If I'm saying a context of the English Reformation, I mention, if I say Martin Luther wrote the 95 thesis, that gives a little bit meat, not just to say the Reformation started before that, then people broke away from the church. Just give, drop a name or two, that will help. And finally, going into the documents, other than describing the documents and other than supporting your argument, the last part, the third part that you might want to do with the document that gives you two point is what is called HIP. Some differences, some teachers have different spelling for that. Historical context, what is happening during that time of the topic that you're mentioning, that might help you. Intended audience of the author. So when he wrote this, who did, who did he want to read this document? What was he thinking about it? POV, that's the point of view of the author. So again, if I'm doing Kipling, for example, I'm saying the historical context, that may, that might be the new imperialism. European country conquering other territories around the world, intended audience. Who is he writing it for? I'm assuming that he's writing it for other white Europeans or Americans during that time. Point of view, what's his point of view? He believes that the whites have a duty to serve or to help, you know, those who are less superior to them. And that also can connect to the purpose. What is the, so purpose is sometimes very similar to that. Okay, so that's kind of my main advices. So hopefully that helped a little bit here. So now let's go back into the ask a question feature and hopefully. Herbert Spencer, yes, is also a good example of social Darwinism. Sorry if I missed that one, I just saw it now. How many points do you need to score in a DBQ to pass? So I already answered that. I'm assuming five will be enough. But again, it depends what other students will get. How do you suggest that we study for the tests? Okay, I mean, that's, I think in this stage of the game, maybe you want to get a review book instead of, I mean, we only have a few weeks to go. Maybe, I don't know if you can ship it to you or hopefully you have one. I mean, getting a big textbook and reading it over at this stage of the game is going to be a little bit harder. So I would say maybe a review book, maybe watching, you know, some online videos, Fivable YouTube videos or stuff like that. Try to make packs, as I said, for each period, kind of like unit one, unit two, kind of trying to get who are the main people, the main events. Maybe also looking at some primary sources can be helpful from each period of time, kind of familiarize yourself with it. And finally, probably I'm hoping your teacher is doing that. I'm doing it with my students. Practicing is probably the best advice you can do. Start practicing doing a DBQ for 45 minutes. Sit down, get the clock on for 45 minutes, get your five documents and like go, like 10 minutes. Do the reading and then 30, 35 minutes, do the writing, kind of see how it feels from that, from that situation. And I'm hopefully, I'm hoping that most of your teachers are doing that in this stage of the game. It's very, very helpful, I think, to practice DBQ and see how the time works. Also, if you're going to get into the whole typing on the computer, I don't know, does anyone here, does everyone know if they're going to type this exam? Thumbs up if you're going to type the exam. Anyone's going to write piece of paper? Typing, typing. And again, do you? And again, do you think you can type? Do you think you can type, you know, like, let's say, the whole DBQ is gonna be like, I don't know, page, a page and a half, you think you can type like in thirty minutes? Are you a fast typewriter? That's something that you should be aware, cuz a lot of people are like, you know, okay, so if I'm horrible in typing, that's what I'm saying, maybe uh, okay, so maybe like, maybe if you're saying I'm not, I'm not that good in, in writing on a piece of paper, I got horrible handwriting, people cannot read mine. Maybe typing online is your thing, but maybe you're very slow on typing. So that's something you need to, I would say, practice that. See the whole practice thing, how long it takes you to type, how long it takes you to write things uh, down. Cuz they're allowing you, they're allowing you to write it and just take a picture of it. Also, they're allowing, I think, to use uh, Google Docs and they're going to allow, I think, Word documents. So these things are all going to work. But don't use Google Share cuz that's, I think, one of those things that they listed, like, that's gonna get you in trouble. And it's gonna be. What do you think a possible DBQ problem would, could be considered? That the DBQ is covering units one and seven? I mean, again, that's the million dollar question, like, you know, uh, be a millionaire if I can tell you right now what the, the question will be. We have no idea what the question will be. In general, the last few years, all the questions were around like the early stages, like the fourteen fifty to the sixteen fifty, like last year was the scientific revolution. Uh, we had the Thirty Years' War not long ago. So we had a lot of earlier time, but I mean, we have no idea what will it be. I mean, might think that they might do, one thing they might do, it might be across two periods uh, trying to mash them together and have questions back and forth, like, I don't know, compare uh, old imperialism to newer imperialism or the age of exploration to the current situation. So they might wanna take uh, two of those different times and try to mash them up. But we don't really know what they will, what they will get. Next question. Could you write in case of an emergency on the DBQ during the submitting five minutes? I mean, you could write in those five crucial minutes, but I'm saying it, you're, you're really testing the limits of like, uh, you don't wanna find a situation uh, that you won't be able to submit uh, during that time. That's what I'm saying, the, the red starts to flash and some people are getting greedy. I don't know if you notice it when sometimes you're doing something and you're like, I got a few more minutes. Let me just finish, let me just finish. And then the time runs out. So it's kind of like, like that greed of like, I want extra, extra, and then you pass the deadline. So you can technically write after the deadline, but you, you're gonna risk it like that. Let's say, let's say you press submit. Let's say the computer is like shutting down. Let's go, there's a big uh, waiting list at that moment. You don't wanna risk it afterward, you're gonna explain to the college board, like I pressed submit, nothing happened. So I would say, don't risk it like when it's, when it starts to fit, when the red starts to flash, just wrap it up a minute or two and then uh, press submit. I would not get greedy and wait for the last minute. I would say, do it at two forty-seven. So yes, you can technically write after the forty-five minutes, but that's the five-minute time submission. Whatever you're doing, if you wrote your essay, this is your time to take a picture and press submit. Uh, I won't even print anything out, I wouldn't mess with the printer, that's too uh, risky. Is there any exception that the DBQ be an evaluate essay? I don't know what that question means. Uh, if somebody wrote it, if they can rephrase that? Exceptions, I, I don't know, I don't really know. Um, I've done a couple of practice DBQ and it has taken me fifty-two on five paragraphs. First attempt to get complexity in forty-nine minutes to four paragraphs. Any tips on how to lower it? Stay away from complexity. Don't get greedy, people, it's that greed that is gonna drag you down. You got, if you get a nine, I guarantee you probably will get a five points in this exam. Complexity is not worth it. It's kind of like, you know, like uh, uh, it's, 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 there's so many points on the table. The, the, the essay before was seven points in like sixty minutes. Now they're giving us ten, uh, ten optional points and they're giving us only forty-five minutes. So yeah, you clocked it and it seems very, very close. By the way, you can get all the points by using four documents. You don't even have to use all the five documents to get all the points. But we're doing, you might wanna do an extra document just as an insurance in case you messed up a previous document. Now also take into account, people that, let's say, a lot of times I found that the image document is the document that messes up a lot of people, that they misinterpreted the, the image. Uh, like a few years ago, we had this image of Cardinal Rishelu and everyone just got it wrong. They were like, oh, he's a Catholic and stuff like that, but didn't look at the image. So he actually supported the Protestant and it was a very deceiving uh, image. But the point is, uh, you might, you're, there, if you're gonna go through all the documents, one document specifically, you won't understand what's going on in it, you won't understand the person or the writing, you're gonna be completely confused. But you don't have time to waste like analysis, reread it a couple of times. You're gonna go fast. You got document number one, who's the name, who's the person? Let me take my notes and then a certain document might get you stuck. I would say skip that document and just move to the next one. You can get all your points from four documents. If you feel you got, understood all the five documents, then sure, use uh, all of them. Right, my school, uh, my school blocks some of the videos from Fible and I don't have a phone. How would I watch the videos for review? I don't understand why were your school uh, block, block the videos? Um, I don't know, maybe you can contact people, somebody in Fible. I think you can also download uh, the videos too. Um, uh, yeah, I don't know how, how, why, uh, is there other options? Maybe contact somebody in Fible's support team and ask him something about that. Or I don't know what the school would block videos. Okay, do we need a conclusion paragraph? If so, what are some things we can include in our conclusion paragraph? Um, there's not, again, because short time, we only have thirty minutes of actual writing. I don't know if we really wanna uh, get into conclusion paragraph. You might wanna have a rephrase uh, the thesis at the end. Some people in the beginning, their thesis is kinda weak and then they start writing their essay, but as they get closer to the end, they kind of like, their thesis kinda gets a little bit stronger. So you might not necessarily, uh, yeah, you can conclude by kinda reinstating the thesis. Again, as you recall, if you study this correctly, thesis can appear in the beginning and thesis can appear at the end. So maybe I kinda rephrase my thesis, maybe the first time I wrote it, the, the reader of the exam is like, ugh, this thesis is kinda not that strong. But then at the end, maybe I made it a little bit stronger and he's like, okay, now, he definitely is gonna get the point for, for that one. Uh, so maybe that, but you do not have necess-, you don't have necessarily to have a conclusion at the end. That's not a part of the rubric or a part of the structure. Basic way to go about thesis context in the beginning, body paragraph number one, body paragraph number two. Now that we have five documents, it could have been three body paragraphs. Now I would stay away from, from too long to get stuck with it. I would not divide them into three groups of three paragraphs. I think that's gonna take a lot of time. But it also depends, people, it depends on the topic. You might have some topics that you're very, very strong at. Anyone wanna tell us what's their best strong topic in the chat room? What's your strongest topic? What is the thing that you're like praying to God that will be on the exam? Reformation, that's a great topic. Renaissance, Thirty Years' War. Age of Imperialism. World War, so there's not gonna be World War. What's W W hashtag something? Imperialism. Nineteenth century industrial revolution, French Revolution. Rise of Socialism. Okay, so these are all big topics, it's good. Uh, let's say, okay, so let's say number one, saying the Reformation is your main, is something you're very strong. If you get that, then you're like, I can tackle all five documents. I know my outside evidence. So there's some topics that you're going to see, your confidence is gonna be like, we got this, this is great. Sorry, and there's some topics you're gonna be like, that's not my strong topics. I don't feel very comfortable with that one. So then, that's what I'm saying, this is where maybe your notes will help you in a, uh, to help you tackle that one. And maybe that's the one that you're gonna have to skip a document and sacrifice that document. Don't waste too much time if you're not getting the documents. Remember, it's all about strategy and only have thirty minutes to write. If I'm gonna get stuck, that's gonna be like, I'm gonna be in real trouble later on. Uh, let's continue with questions. For outside evidence, uh, does it always have to be a person or can it be an historical event also? Yes, it can also be historical uh, event situation that is happening during uh, during that time. And um, and again, the point is, I've heard this from many exam readers. Sometimes somebody was going for outside evidence and they gave them points for context. Sometimes they were going for context and they were getting outside evidence. So sometimes you're intending one thing and they see another thing, the reader of the exam. So you know, sometimes you stumble on those things accidentally. The more information you drop, you might get a point for uh, for something else. But you can double dip. If they gave you one point for context, they're not gonna give you for outside evidence. If you're giving outside evidence, they won't. So it's not necessarily just a person uh, did something. It could be an event, something that happened uh, during uh, during that time. Can you talk about a two-point thesis a little bit more in depth? Okay, so does anyone, anyone here in the chat room, did anyone, teacher taught them about a two-point thesis? Or a three-point thesis? Yes, yes, no, yes? Okay, so again, there's not one format for everyone to teach in a certain way. Uh, I would just say, okay, when I'm going through the documents, I'm trying to find basically similarities between the documents. I'm trying to find how to group the documents. Grouping them meaning that there's some connection. I used to have a, a student one time said in class, make the document talk. And I was like, hallelujah, that's it. If the document can communicate and find a connection, then I can start basically grouping them. I'm like, ah, this guy's a socialist and this guy's a social, is preaching something close to socialism. So let's me group and then these guys are in the socialist camp. And then I'm like, oh, this guy's a capitalist and this guy's a free economic system. So then I can combine him into group number one, supports socialism. Group number two supports capitalism. So then my thesis, whatever the subject is, whatever, after the industrial revolution, uh, two reactions happened. One uh, was uh, strong capitalism, however socialism had the biggest influence. Whatever my thesis is. So then I go paragraph number one, my group that supports the capitalist thesis. Then I said, this guy, Adam Smith, wrote the Wealth of Nations. I support my thesis by giving example and describing example and doing a POV. The next group, I go and claim my socialist thesis and prove documents. So two-point thesis is trying to grab what is, what are the two main things that I'm grabbing for the documents to prove my thesis that that's something that happened? Let's say I say the reason, the cause that Henry the Eighth broke away from the English church is, is political. So I try to show the documents that prove that it was a political decision. Uh, maybe I'm saying the reason he broke away from the Church of England was a financial decision. So then I show the documents that prove that, oh, this is where he broke the monastery so he's gonna make money on that. So I gotta look at the documents, I don't know base, I don't know what my thesis is until I read the documents. Once I read the documents, I kind of establish what my thesis was. Uh, for outside evidence, do we need specific people for the time period? For example, in the source about the Edict of Nantes, uh, it talks about Henry. Could we just talk about him being a politique? And peace between the religion was the best for the state? And that was his motivation, so that give us the point? Uh, so yeah, I, I, I don't know necessarily like what the question in that specific situation is like. Uh, I'm not seeing the DBQ in front of me, but uh, let's say it's about the, let's say the question is about the War of Religion in France. And um, so yeah, I give maybe my context, my background will be the, the Reformation, going back to again Martin Luther and all these sort of thing. Or maybe I wanna do, yes, and maybe I wanna do outside evidence, talking about the Reformation in England also. Maybe I wanna compare that to that situation. So yeah, it depends what the topic is. Let's say if it's War of Religion, okay, let's say it's War of Religion, DBQ. And um, they mentioned, I don't know, Germany and Luther and they mentioned England. So let's say if I bring uh, the War of Religion in France, that's my outside evidence, okay? Cuz that was not mentioned in the documents in front of me. And then I can, yes, if I wanna talk about uh, Henri the Fourth, and if I wanna talk that he was a politique, that's, that's definitely gonna give me point cuz that's a lot of meat for an answer, okay? So if I just say there was also revolution in France, that's kind of vague. If I say Henry the Fourth, Henri the Fourth, if I say politique, if I mention some of these people, then I get some, uh, some real meat. If I mention Bartholomew de Massacre, that's the kind of thing where I'm going for. So yeah, it's not just necessarily a name, it could be the event. So let's say Saint Bartholomew de Massacre, that could be it. How are we to upload the document type picture and, or the essay if it's handwritten? I think if it's handwritten, I, I think you just uh, take a picture of it and then you send that to whatever documents. I, I'm, I'm not seeing the, obviously, I won't be doing the exam uh, like you guys, but I think you take a picture of the thing and then submit it. They were probably in the first thirty minutes before the exam that you start, you're going through the online signing up process, they will probably show you what to do. And like that was a typing test to see if your computer is connected. And I'm sure they will explain to you what to do to submit it if you're, if you're writing it uh, on a piece of paper, how to take a picture of it. Will there still be makeup dates? Yes, so they're, they told us for all the exam, they also submitted that there will be makeup dates. Uh, I think, uh, I think it's in June. Uh, and I think you also have the option not to take the exam in May and you have the option to take the exam in June. So if anything happens to anyone, uh, that they get stuck or they can't take that exam on that date, they can still take it in June. Why did they add more points to the DBQ even though we have less time? Great question. I have no idea why they did it that way. Could be that they did it that way because that's the only thing that is left in this exam, okay? Cuz uh, the original exam was four parts and now there's only one part. So maybe they need a little bit more uh, uh, more ways to see how to grade someone uh, or more options to get a higher grade. Cuz historically, if people just got two out of seven, that means that's not a good grade to pass an exam. So now everything is on the DBQ, so maybe giving more points is meant to, to help you out. How long should our DBQ be per paragraph wise? And I mean, again, it depends on the topic. Some people have a very good skill of just getting straight into the point. They know how to write a very, very summarized paragraph and some people make it a little bit longer. I'm assuming, again, only thirty minutes to write. I'm assuming like, I don't know, like a page and a half will probably be alright. I'm assuming we're a full page, so I can't tell you numbers why and how long the paragraph will be. But again, depends how many documents you're using, how, how much information you need to do for analysis. I mean, it could be just a picture of something and you just describe what's in the picture and the person and the event. So you can't really describe more than that. But it depends, depends on the topic. So outside evidence, it needs to be from the same topic, but not involved in the source giving on the DBQ? Yes. Or it must be further information about a source that the writer has not given? Okay, let me try to explain it another way. They gave you five documents, you have to provide two more documents, okay? So it's like five documents, you give two more documents. If you had to write the DBQ, what other two documents can you plug in that were not mentioned over there? So let's say it's the Renaissance and you know, they gave you five writers from the Renaissance, but they forgot Machiavelli, okay? You bring Machiavelli into the group, you got outside evidence, okay? Whatever their topic is. I mentioned the War of Religion, they mentioned War of Religion in England, they mentioned War of Religion in Germany, but didn't mention France. You bring France, that's your outside evidence. So it's like you brought another document, that's another way of looking at that. But yes, of course, it's gotta be during those times, the, the time years. Also, if you looked in DBQs, you probably noticed that they work chronologically in years. They start from the later year uh, like, and move forward. So let's say it's whatever, uh, let's say it's World War One, nineteen fourteen to nineteen nine, uh, uh, let's say it's World War One to World War Two, so start from nineteen fourteen and finish in nineteen thirty-nine. So you, chronologically, you're gonna look in the middle and say, what document did they skip? What can I add in to the story that is not mentioned? Let's say it's a DBQ about the Reformation and they mentioned Luther. Let's say it's a DBQ about the Reformation and they mentioned Luther, they mentioned uh Svengili, they mentioned Henry VIII. Uh, and they skipped Calvin. So let's say if you put Calvin in, that's your new document to write what they uh not mentioned. All right, I think I finished all the questions. So if there's any other questions for tonight? By the way, you can also write, if you have any historical questions, doesn't have to be DBQ related. If you have any questions about historical stuff, I might be able to help you out to the best of my ability. You think time will be the biggest issue of this year? Yes, I think time is your worst enemy in this situation. I think there's, there might be opportunity here that you only have to focus for forty-five minutes versus three hours, so that might be your advantage, but I think the focus, just to be completely like, you know, I don't know, put Eye of the Tiger, I don't know what you kids listen to do, Eye of the Tiger, I tell my students to get pumped, like before the exam, get your focus on. Uh, and then just, you're welcome, uh, thank you for everything, uh, just get your focus in advance. And yeah, just focus for reading the document. So time is the only, I think it's the only enemy uh to be focused and not to stay behind. If somebody's looking for complexity, that's going to bring you down. If you're going to get stuck with the document, trying to read it three times and not getting, getting what's going on, just drop the document and move forward. Time is your enemy, I think, in this situation. I think uh just move the ego aside and just try to get to the next document. Uh, how could I strengthen different topics that I'm weaker in? I mean, great question. I mean, what happens with most students, we just, same thing for me when I was a student, we just get good at certain topics and we just learn more and more about the topics that we're good at. You're like, oh, I love the Renaissance, let's, let's, let's read more about the Renaissance, let's watch a documentary about the Renaissance. The topics that you're weaker at, you're probably going to have to put a little bit more effort, effort in them. So yeah, maybe you don't want to sit and read an entire book, I don't know, about whatever, about mannerism or whatever, something you're not that interested in. So maybe, you know, watch a stream on Fibleball, maybe watch a YouTube video for like uh ten minutes on it. Just get familiarized with it, with that topic that you're weaker at. And again, review books are not, they don't go into so much details, they just give you a general overview, overview. Saying, yeah, review books, some videos, something quick if you can't handle it for too long. Uh. Who would you consider essential people to know from the Renaissance? So it's interesting, just yesterday, I had a, a stream about the uh European literature. That's a great overview if you want to know all the major uh literature work for um uh for the AP Europe. So I did a chronological event, so like Renaissance, Enlightenment, uh Romanticism, Realism, so everyone is listed in that stream. So just check out that stream and I listed all the biggest work for the Renaissance. I'd probably say like, you know, you probably want to know Machiavelli. Uh, you want to probably know Thomas More, you want, for Northern Renaissance, Erasmus and Thomas More, I think, will cover you for Northern Renaissance writers. And, and Italy, probably Machiavelli, uh Petrarch, probably good. Uh, Boccaccio is probably good. Yeah, I think that's probably the main writers of the time that you want to know. Any other historical question, not DBQ related, in the last few minutes we have? All right, if there's no more question for tonight, so I'd like to thank you all for coming in for this very, very super active DBQ session. The literature stream seems great, definitely, we'll check it out, yes. I mean, now we're just getting into the streams of just to summarize things. I'm doing a stream also next week just about the Enlightenment. So just check out review streams, they're, they're probably like, kind of summarize all the major key points. I did also a stream about summarizing the French Revolution. I did a stream summarizing the English Revolution, kind of the key points for every period. Go and look at the Library of Fibleball and kind of check all the main people and events that, that will probably be a little bit uh better for you. Um, okay, so if there's no other question for tonight, I'd like to thank you all for coming uh to check out this stream. Um, thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed the stream. Uh, and wishing everyone a great night. Uh, and good nights and good luck.